I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August 10, 2011. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here, and Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you all standing, please, you have to be sworn in, anybody that will give any testimony tonight, either for or against any item. So if you please raise your hand, I swear that any testimony I give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay. And I would ask that you silence any and all electronic devices. Okay, what do we have? First, before we get into the reading of our minutes, fellow commissioners, if you will note on the findings of fact, we're asked to have a little different procedure. When we have a reading of the findings of fact, and it'll pertain to criteria one, criteria two, and criteria three, we will vote one time after all three criteria are read. And then if you have an objection with one of the criteria, it can be brought up. If you agree with criteria one, add two, but have trouble with number three, et cetera, like I say, then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Actually, there'll only be one vote per person. One vote per presentation.
It's one per presentation, but we vote after each one of them.
No.
No, we're gonna vote once at the end.
We'll vote on each one of the findings of fact, but only vote once on the findings of fact, and then once on each agenda item. Is that correct?
I thought we were streamlining, and this is this making it more...
If there's three variances and three findings of fact for each, you'll vote after, you'll just have one reading of the findings of fact, but you vote after each of the three?
Yes.
The findings of fact are only read once.
Right, correct.
Okay.
But you vote on each...
I thought you said that we would vote after all three were read.
But you vote on the different variances, right, right.
We will vote on each separate variance.
Correct.
Now, each separate finding of fact also has to be voted on.
Yes, yes, correct. By voice vote, as we have customary.
As what paragraph one states, though, where some projects will have two or more related variances, there will be one finding of fact.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
So there's only one reading of the findings of fact.
Okay. I hope we didn't confuse the audience too much on this.
Let's do one.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our July 13 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Abstain.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
I pass.
I'm here, too, Wally, just in case you wanted to know.
Oh, abstain. I'm sorry. You get off the list for one month, and you're in trouble.
He's here so seldom.
I'll be replaced, I see.
Okay, next item of business is old business, planning and zoning item 11-030. Dima Yazji regarding the property located at 224 Willard Place, Westmont, for the following: A, zoning code variance request to allow the construction of an addition on a lot of substandard width in the R3 single-family detached residence district. B, zoning code variance request to allow an addition on a lot of substandard area in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Petitioner is not here? Okay. Fred, would you care to...
Well, I'm thinking perhaps, Mr. Chairman, maybe the thing to do, could we proceed on with new business and defer this, and hopefully the petitioner will show before the end of the proceeding tonight?
Okay. Counselor, shall we have a motion?
We can just pass it till the end of the...
Well, I'll just pass it until the end. Okay, next item of business is new business, planning and zoning item 11-031. James and Jane Mushon regarding the property located at 101 North Lincoln for the following: A, zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a covered porch with a non-conforming front yard setback in the R3 single-family detached residence district. And one of the criteria which we need is a hardship for, to grant a variance, to recommend the granting of a variance. So if you would speak to the hardship that would be upon you, if, that would help us.
Okay, the hardship would probably be ice and snow accumulating on the front stoop. That's the main access to our house. So anyone coming or going from the house has to deal with ice and snow. We filled it up. Porch cover would, would help that.
And also, I believe, when your house was built, it was built in the setback that was allowed, but the village has since changed the front yard setback.
Right.
Since your house is existing, we surely can't move your house back.
Right.
So that would very, very much be a hardship. Okay, so if you would speak to just what you care to do for us, please?
We just want to have a roof constructed over the existing front stoop with railing, and we also have to get a new roof. So we would like to get the construction done, so we can get the roof taken care of.
And actually, the construction you're going to do is you're not going to encroach into the front yard anymore?
No.
Than the front of your steps are existing?
Right.
Okay. That's fairly straightforward. Anybody from the public will speak on this? If you would, please, sign in.
Oh, boy.
Spicious-looking character. Trouble.
Behave yourselves. Jane is a very close neighbor to me, and if you drove down Lincoln, you will notice there are many houses that have little covers coming out over the front steps, and that's all they're asking to do. Nobody in the neighborhood has a problem with it. Roy lives right there, too. They're wonderful neighbors. If you drove by, their house is well-kept up, their yard is gorgeous, and I think we all approve of this to be done, so.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if you would, would you please just announce your name for the home audience?
Sure, Jane Mushon.
Mushon. Thank you very much. Okay, nobody else from the public? We'll close the public comment, and we'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
I have a front porch just like it. I'm 100% in favor of getting it covered. Good luck.
Commissioner Pill?
I was by today. The house is beautiful. I love the landscaping. It looks keeping in part with the whole neighborhood. I don't see any problems with that. I wish you luck. You'll probably wonder why you waited 33 years. Good luck.
Commissioner Anton?
I was also there today, and I wanted to get my putter and go on your grass and play. He was that nice, but I didn't want to bother you. Good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I was there, too, and you keep, you have a beautiful house, and you keep the property up beautifully, and I can certainly understand why you'd want to... Also, I noticed that the house immediately north of you is actually setting a little forward from what you are, so it wouldn't in any way change the character of the neighborhood. I'm all for it.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I'm for it as well. I believe that it's gonna, I personally like the idea of having that porch out there. I think, I like the homes that have those rather than without, so I wish you luck.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, I go by there at least twice a day, walking my dog, CAKEO, and this'll be a nice addition to a very pretty house.
And I agree, when I was there today, also, the house to the north of you, their front extends even further into the front yard setback than yours, and I would compliment you on the upkeep of your house. I think it's fantastic. To be honest, I didn't think you needed a roof, though. It looked pretty good to me.
You should see my dining room ceiling.
Oh, okay. Okay, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The existing home was constructed in 1941 and contains a legal non-conforming front yard setback of 28.4 feet. The proposed roof addition over an existing stoop slash front porch is needed for safety from the elements, for shade, energy-saving purposes, and for aesthetic improvements to the house. Without this variance, the applicant could not provide a safe and sheltered entrance into their home, and therefore could not yield a reasonable return.
Now, this is where I'm confused. We are, we're not voting after each one of these criteria.
Voting after each one?
Yes.
Okay. We are unanimous in our agreement.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The proposed roof overhang results in only a modest additional encroachment in the front yard, which is justified by the safety and convenience concerns that the applicant is seeking to alleviate.
If you agree with this, we are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed front porch roof will constitute an aesthetic improvement to the house, is consistent with existing improvements and setbacks of nearby houses, and will not alter the character of the area.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement? Okay, now, according to this, are we looking for a vote, or that just said? That we will adopt them?
Just a vote on the...
Motion.
On item A, yes.
The motion.
Okay. Since we are agreed on the findings of fact, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under planning and zoning item 11-031, item A, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a covered porch with a non-conforming front yard setback. So moved.
Second.
Okay, that's motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, you have our recommendation for a variance, and staff can tell you when you go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole. The gentleman that just came in, would you be...
I came, I came a little bit late for the old business for Dima, 2024. I can wait if you...
No, no, no. We deferred, so if you would, please, come up, give your name, please.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Joseph Evan. I am here regarding 224 Willard Place.
Okay, if you would just wait, and then I will read what you're asking. I may ask you, though, how do you spell your name? I don't want to mispronounce it.
Joseph, oh, sign in, okay. Joseph Evan, E-V-A-N.
He represents these people. Oh, okay. Yes.
Because he wasn't here, I don't think.
Since you weren't here at the first, you need to be sworn in, so, when you give testimony this, this evening. So if you would please raise your hand, I swear that any testimony I give this evening should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I do. Thank you. Okay, planning and zoning item 11-030. Dima Yazji regarding the property located at 224 Willard Place for the following: A, zoning code variance request to allow the construction of an addition on a lot of substandard width in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Item B, zoning code variance request to allow an addition on a lot of substandard area in the R3 single-family detached residence district. If you would, please, sir.
I, I, I am the architect. I prepared those plans. You probably saw those, and they asked me to came out and speak up for them, because they, they were not able to, came, you know.
If you would speak up, sir, I'm getting old, I'm a little hard-ary.
The house they, they have on 224 Willard Place is a, it's existing frame structure, small, smaller home with, like, not finished attic space, but has like two bedrooms, and they, they choose a neighborhood. They liked the neighborhood. They're not local from Westmont. They moved in from Oak Park, and they liked the neighborhood, and they purchased the older home with, putting an addition to it. And then when we find out, we would be needing to, going to, in front of the board, then we, we, we still design whatever they ask for on the architecture working documents, and we, we just did what you probably saw on all those drawings, and there are several, few newer homes on the street, and they, they, they will choose, design what you see pretty much on the plans we, we were submitting to, to building department. And the construction of the home, there would be a two-story home with same raised first floor, four-bedroom home, typical suburban, suburban house, pretty much, some of the existing structure will remain, and the addition will be going on, on the east, east side. We still, still will remain side yard setbacks required by zoning ordinance, and also 35% of lot coverage, we will, we will also comply. That's how we designed pretty much all addition. And we just have 49-foot wide lot, and we are falling into a substandard lot problem, and that's what we are here for, pretty much, tonight.
So the lot has been subdivided many, many years ago?
Yes, yeah.
And it does not meet the minimum village requirements, and of course, that...
Right.
By anybody's standard, that would be a hardship.
Pretty much, all those...
But you, except for the substandard lot and area and width, you will be complying with all of the village codes?
Yes, we all, we, we already design all, all the, all the architecture working documents were designed according U.S. 35% lot coverage, and we, we are complying with setbacks, height regulations, and all zoning R3 regulations required are already provided on architecture working documents.
And you are aware that any patios, hard surface, would count on the 35%?
Yes, 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 yeah, yeah. That's what we calculate, and we are, we pretty much, we have 35% exactly on a, on a lot, with hard surface and the structure.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this? Okay, we will close the public comment, and we'll start with Commissioner Fleet.
So on the east border, well, the drawings that we're looking at, on the east border of, of your plan, roughly 14 and a half feet, and then on the west side, roughly eight, maybe eight and a third feet. How does, within our, within our village and the setbacks on the side setbacks?
Well, in an R3, Commissioner, I believe the, the setback requirements on the side yard are 20% of the aggregate lot width, minimum six feet, so 12 and eight feet would comply with that requirement.
And you know that the requirements for keeping the lot probably much nicer looking than it looking right now and driving past it today?
Yes.
A lot of overgrowth, and that, that, that needs to be maintained, or like your neighbors are.
Right.
So, so I think I have to say, I wish you good luck with this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I'm just curious, on the drawing, it appears that there's stairs on the backside of the property?
Yes.
Backside of the house. There isn't any plan, I know you mentioned that you, you had calculated everything, but no plan for any future patio or...
No, it's all, it's all just access to the basement, and there is also access from first floor to a backyard with stairs. That's all they have.
That's all the stairs are for, okay.
Yeah, just for access purpose.
Okay, all right. I think it looks really great. It's going to much improve that property.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Is anyone living there now?
No, nobody is living there now, no.
Okay, because it's very, very neglected, as it is now.
Yes, yeah.
So the people are still living in Oak Park, and they're, they purchased this property and...
To, to, for a new home, yeah, that's why.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Anton?
I have a problem with it.
Commissioner Pill?
What are you doing with the bus?
It's a camper for now, and they, it's just sitting there now for...
Is it the new owners, or what, did it come with the house?
Oh, this is the new owners.
Will they be keeping that bus there?
No, it'll, it'll, I think that it'll go, go away. They just put it up there because they had no place to put it now, for now. But I, we would have to double-check with them, because I, I'm just speaking out for the work, what I did for them architectural-wise, but I, I knew him personally, too, also.
I love the plans. This is a great improvement. I think it'll be well-received in the neighborhood. You've done a great job of complying with the local ordinances and things, and although it's not your responsibility, I believe there's an ordinance against parking a bus like that there, and that's why I was curious whether that was going to stay there or whether that was going to leave, because it sort of overall contributes to not the look probably that everybody wants in that block. So you might just pass that along, but otherwise, I think this is a drastic and a well-deserved improvement. I thought you did a nice job with the plans.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
When I was over there, I talked to some neighbors, and they were in favor of, of it, losing the garage that's there, it's an eyesore, and apparently there have been some upkeep issues in the past. And, and the question about the bus parking there, the worry probably, I don't want to speak for anybody, the worry that, that people are going to stay there in, in that vehicle, which is not...
I don't, I don't.
It's going to be, the neighbors are in favor of it, and in fact, I think they would be okay with people staying there if it hurried up the construction, but that's not what the rules allow, so I'm in favor of it, and wish, wish the new owners the best of luck.
Thank you.
And I would echo my fellow commissioners' comments in that whatever you do to the property is you're going to improve it, so that, I'm very happy to see that. I do have one question. Does the home have an existing basement now?
Yeah, it's a raised basement, and we, we will be digging it out for eight-foot high, eight-foot-high clearance, height, ceiling height.
You're going to dig it out?
Yeah, they're going to be, digging it lower, so they can get better headroom, because I think it's six feet, if I'm not mistaken, six foot, two inches or something like that.
Okay, I think the basement right now extends to the front of the existing house? And is that where the garage is going to be?
Right, yeah. I, I think existing base, part of the existing basement will be used for garage, and then the rest of it will be, there will be four steps going down to a new basement.
I don't believe our village code allows a basement under a garage, does it, Fred?
Well, that's one of the things that we would review with the applicants during the building permit issuance and the plan review, Mr. Chairman, and I think, given the fact that this is going to be rather complex and digging out the basement, I'm sure Don Morris Architects, the building contract, plan reviewer, will have several questions about that and want to make sure that the review is in order.
Okay. But again, I have no, no problem with it whatsoever. I look forward to your, to your building, your home. It looks like it's going to be beautiful.
Yeah, they're going to use...
Any further comments? Okay. May we have a re...
The only question I had was, it seemed to be even in our notes that there was some concern that, and that these people had planned to live there while this is going on. Do you know whether that was their intent?
Live in the existing house?
To live in the bus while the house is being built?
No, I don't think so, no.
Oh, okay. I guess, let's, I think it's been kind of hinted at before, they cannot do that.
Yeah.
They will not allow temporary residents in a camping trailer while the home is under construction.
Okay.
I told them, they, they, it probably would be allowed to live in the existing house, because we, we designed a house that, that will be built up with new construction, and old house will be taken apart when all frames going to be built up. So if there will be, you know, if they're going to be structurally safe, you know, all str, you know, will be all good, you know, we did it before houses like, we build up new, new structure over the existing one, and while people were living in the old house, and then we took the old house apart and, and kind of adjusted interior walls, and it was doable to live in the old house while, while all addition and everything else was kind of forming up.
But that's not the plan here. You know, your, your understanding is they will not live in it whatsoever?
They're not going to be living in a camper, no. I, I hope not. It's not allowed. They know that, I hope.
That's not the purview.
I think somebody contacted them already.
No, no, it's not.
Somebody contacted them from, from zoning, I think Wiki already contacted them from...
Yeah. Before anybody could occupy the residence, though, you would need an occupancy permit, and that's another function of another part of the village, not this commission.
Right.
Okay, we, any further questions? Okay, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property is a pre-existing lot of record with a substandard width and area. Adjacent lots are fully developed, thus there is no adjacent property to purchase to alleviate these nonconformities. The proposed improvements to this property comply with all setback requirements and comply with the lot coverage requirements of the zoning ordinance. The applicant cannot make any reasonable improvements to this property, and thus cannot yield a reasonable return without these variances.
Agree with this? Please raise your hand. You're unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The property is a pre-existing lot of record dating back to 1925. The applicant did not subdivide this property and did not create this hardship.
Agree with this? Please raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The existing lot is similar in width and area to other improved lots in the immediate neighborhood. The proposed addition will meet all setback and lot coverage requirements of the zoning ordinance, will be consistent with improvements to other properties in the neighborhood, and will not alter the character of this area.
If you agree with this, raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for variance are adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the village board, item A, zoning code variance request to allow the construction of an addition on a lot of substandard width in the R3 single-family detached residence district. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, item B. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees. Item B, zoning code variance request to allow an addition on a lot of substandard area in the R3 single-family detached residence district. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Phil?
Yes.
I mean, Pill? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation. Village staff can tell you when you'll have to go before the committee of the whole on a Thursday evening.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next item, planning and zoning item 11-032. Michael and Laura Cortina regarding the property located at 644 Champlain Avenue for the following: A, zoning code variance request to allow a driveway wider than the 22-foot maximum width allowed by village code. A, zoning code variance request to allow a driveway wider than the 22-foot maximum width allowed by village code. Good evening, sir. If you would announce your name and sign in.
I'm Michael Cortina.
And again, if you would speak to the hardship that you're, is causing you to ask for the variance?
Well, my wife has two physical ailments, both that affect motor skills. They're debilitating and will only get worse over time. We love Westmont. We've been here for 18 years since my kids were children. So we felt the thing to do is to, to help her with the stairs, which are becoming more perilous, to put on a first floor master bedroom, which we've already done. We have been upgrading the home already, new siding and all that as part of the remodeling with the first floor bedroom. Because this will turn a four-bedroom into a five-bedroom home and we already have three driving children, three cars right now. Two kids are still at college in for the summer, going back in the fall. We will soon have four and five cars. And it'll be at a point soon, once we have five, we want to be able to park the cars legally. We would have two in the garage, two in the driveway and we can't park on the street. So we're asking for some flexibility on this issue as far as that goes. Not to mention, when you add on, make a five-bedroom house, for the money that we have to put into for remodeling, if we don't have that third carport, I believe it'll hurt our resale chances where where that expanded driveway, where we can park that third car in the driveway, will help us with resale down the road trying to recoup our remodeling investment. And that's basically it. It's getting harder to juggle the cars and the slope of the driveway, it's hard to do it in the morning. So we're looking for a little flexibility. As far as a lot coverage, we're only asking to go 1% over the new 35. We understand it used to be 40 not too long ago, so just a minor tweak there. And as far as the widening of the driveway, we're just asking to go from 22 to 25, so it's not like a giant abomination. We believe we're asking for minor flexibility here.
And if you were to get this wider driveway built, have cars sitting off on the side where you could get your car into the house, where it'd be easier for your wife to get in and out of the car?
She wants to work as long as possible and stay busy.
Well, that's understandable completely. All right, sir, is there anybody else from the public who will speak on this? Let's close the public comment and we'll go to Commissioner Thomas.
I'm in, I'm in favor of it. Good luck. I have nothing else.
Thank you. Commissioner Pill?
I, I also support this and feel this is a perfect example of why we approve things like this. This is a family that's been in Westmont and the community for a long time, has raised three kids in the area, put them through the schools and wants to stay in the community and contribute to it. And this is, this to me is a no-brainer as far as that's concerned. This is the kind of thing we're here to support.
Commissioner Rainton?
Same. I was over there today. Can use it, it could be wider. Definitely could use it. It's apparent they need it. And I like big driveways anyway, big fences, big garages.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
I was over there today too and I fully understand. I don't have any problem.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, and looking at the property as far as the driveway goes, you're not asking to expand the apron. It's just strictly the drive itself and give yourself a little more flexibility. And it's not that large. It's not going to be, you know, overly obvious that there's an additional amount of surface area. So I don't have a real problem with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, having four drivers in our house and five cars, it's nice to have that extra space and I wish you good luck with it.
Thank you. I also, when I was over there today, I saw absolutely no problem with enlarging that drive and I think I might echo the concern of the, all our car dealers on Ogden Avenue. They're happy to see you. All right, since we have a request for a variance, we need a reading of the findings of fact if we could, please.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The proposed increase in driveway width will accommodate the health needs of a family member residing on the premises and the applicant has no viable alternative for accommodating these needs in light of other family members who utilize the driveway for parking. Without this accommodation, the applicant cannot fully enjoy their home and yield a reasonable return.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The primary purpose of the variance is to accommodate the health needs of a family member residing on the premises in light of other family members who must park in the driveway.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The driveway is currently 25 feet at its widest point. This modest variance for this driveway reconstruction will not impact stormwater drainage or alter the character of the area.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the village board under planning and zoning item 11-032. Item A, a zoning code variance request to allow a driveway wider than the 22-foot maximum width allowed by village code.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation and again, staff can tell you when you go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item, planning and zoning item 11-033. Holly Angle of Super Value with Jetco Properties Jewel Express regarding the property located at 4 East Ogden Avenue for the following. A, preliminary plat of subdivision request to split one lot into two. Good evening, sir. If you would just announce your name, please.
Good evening. I'm Ben Busmane of Webster McGrath and Albert. We're the consulting engineers, land surveyors for this project. Simply just asking to separate the Jewel Express property from the Jewel Osco property. Right now, it's all on one lot. We'd like to create a separate lot for the Jewel Express.
All right. Anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? We'll close the public comment. We'll start with Commissioner Fleet.
Uh, let's see, the access onto Ogden Avenue from the gas station, that'll, that's part of what will be split off from the Jewel?
Correct. There's a easement that we're intending through that driveway. Allow access to the Jewel Express property from Ogden. It's not expressly noted on?
Okay, part of that, yeah, part of that like goes down the center line. Does it go down the center line of that, the first rule parking the Jewel has or where's it take this break where it jogs to, to the west?
Fred, does this work?
Yes, the overhead should work.
Oh, come on.
Just a couple minutes.
Side, yeah. One more page.
Okay.
We provided a site plan with the, with the packet that shows where the lot sits in relationship to the curb lines and to the property.
Okay. Yeah, just.
Nothing's coming on.
Is it not coming on yet?
So you have the roadside, the sign, the marquee sign with the, with the gas prices on it. And then you have the, the entrance and exit on Ogden and that's part, that'll be part of Lot 2?
The?
There it is.
Ogden Avenue entrance is actually going to be on the Jewel property, Lot 1.
Okay, so Jewel will, will take that part, okay.
Yes. And we're not planning any improvements to the site, any new improvements. There's no driveway changes, no building changes.
So basically, there'll be a split between the driveway right, okay, I see as, as you enter. I go there every day and I just, but I just couldn't picture where this was happening, but I see that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, no further questions here.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I don't have any issue with it. I see that, you know, the, obviously the parcel will have to have the easements that you mentioned.
Correct.
If in the future it is ever separated and there is any redevelopment, then there'll be another issue with that in the future.
Correct.
Hopefully they'll be able to maintain those easements and?
It'll be recorded on the, on the title to the property.
Okay, so there won't be an issue there. Okay, I don't have a problem with this.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No questions.
Commissioner Anton?
No questions.
Commissioner Pill?
I, I don't really have any question with this. This is pretty straightforward. I noticed some six to eight weeks ago when driving by, I saw a flurry of activity in the cleanup of the property. And you're a large, that's a very large piece of property that the Jewel has. It's really something that most people take notice of because of the size of it. I happen to live and work both less than a mile away from that area. And I was curious because in reading through this packet, and I'd like to address this question to Fred. It appears that when the group was before us last, that they did not complete all of the things that were supposed to be completed and that's perhaps why I saw this. I didn't know this was coming forward, but that's perhaps why I saw the flurry of cleanup activity because for many years, it seems like it's been neglected almost immediately after you were here. And I remember sitting here during the presentation for the remodeling of the Jewel and the building and the gas station. And it almost seemed like you guys flew in a team and it was, there was a line across, you may have even been here at that one.
I was here, actually.
I recognize your face.
Yes, why?
And it was, it was a wonderful presentation and then I couldn't help but feel because our families shop there. There's probably some member of my immediate or extended family shopping at the Jewel almost every day of the week. And I recognized that it seemed to go downhill almost immediately as far as the upkeep of it. Brass and shrubs were burned and mulch was not replaced and irrigation hoses were just sticking straight up out of the ground and I was curious if we're going to be in for the same thing as soon as, it almost seems like we cleaned it up because we're here to ask for something new and I'm just wondering if we're going to stay on top of it.
I'll pass it on to the store manager. I would hope the maintenance would be continued or, you know, their attention would be continued on that, but I know they've done a decent job this summer.
It looks great.
Yeah.
It hasn't looked that way the last five years.
Darn pizza places.
Is that, is that what's actually occurred here, Fred?
Yes.
We viewed this as an opportunity to convince the property owner to spruce it up a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, like I said, this is very straightforward. I support this. I don't have a problem with it. I hope they take it to heart because, you know, it's one thing if you've got a 20-foot wide lot, nobody sees it. This thing is a couple acres and sits right on a prime corner with a stoplight where everybody's, everybody's going by or stopping. And we've got just probably the most beautiful strip of car dealers in Chicagoland there, high-end car dealers, which brings a lot of upscale clientele and probably some people who stop in for extra business, you know, they're out looking at cars and things like that and they decide to pick up some things to bring to the house and stuff. It just, I think, would be in keeping to, to, to keep that look.
I agree. And I, I think they do have a lot of nice trees there and a lot of nice landscaping and it would be a shame if?
It wasn't a lot of work to get it to where it's at right now, it didn't seem.
Correct, it wasn't. It just took the time and effort.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I have, I'm in, I'm in support of it and also reiterate what he just said, that the village, if it falls below village standards, that you should expect a visit and a reminder that upkeep is a necessity.
Okay, I'll pass that along, like I said.
That's all.
I do have one question. Fred, by breaking this off, would this impact any signs? Allowable signs or anything on there or?
Well, I, I think in the absence of any other changes, Mr. Chairman, we probably indicate that that's a pre-existing condition in the future. If one of the other entities on either one of these parcels would want to touch those signs, that would trigger a requirement to review again and make sure that the signage was in full compliance with the code at that time.
Okay, the only problem I, I'm looking at here is on your page two, the county recorder certificate where easements and et cetera are spelled out. Your lot number two, according to your site plan, has no curb cut to Ogden Avenue or Cass Avenue. Right now, you are using, or you will be using, the property from Lot 1, their ingress and egress.
One of the comments we've received from the village engineer was to make sure that we did add language for cross-access easement, which I had mentioned previously. So there will be?
So you're going to clear that up?
We'll clear that up, correct.
Otherwise, that's going to be a big problem.
Yes.
Okay. Then I have no problem with it whatsoever. Good thing we've got a good village engineer. All right. No further questions? Okay, under, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the village board. Planning and zoning item 11-033, preliminary plat of subdivision request to split one lot into two.
So moved.
Second.
That's motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren? Says yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval and again, staff can tell you when you'll go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir. Planning and zoning item 11-034. Jeff Ninguard of CJI and AutoNation Audi regarding the property located at 276 East Ogden for the following. A, zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs. B, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage. If you would give your name, please, sir.
My name is Tom McCavan with Spaceco. We've been the civil engineers for Mercedes, Audi, BMW, all along here. And we're here tonight to get, kind of put the finishing touches on Audi. We're looking for a variation on the size of the sign. We're looking to put a sign out in front right now. If you look on the, the map I put up, I don't think that's in your packet. Over the last several years between the Audi and the Mercedes, they're, they're next to each other. We've tried to go through. We've purchased some of the properties there, kind of cleaned them up. And I think now, between Mercedes and Audi, we probably did too good a job because I think a lot of people get confused about where to turn in for each one. So that's one of the necessities here for, for the sign out in front. Right now, there's signage on the building itself. And when you look through the, the variation, it looks like a large variation because we're talking about 91 feet of frontage there on the new building, but again, going back. When we purchased the restaurant on the corner, we took that down. We've got about 200 feet here of building that has nothing on it. And so part of our thinking is if, if there was something built on the corner, you'd have more signage there that'd be allowable by code. And so this extra 200 feet here, there's nothing, it's, it's a blank wall, it's all landscape there. I guess we're saying if, if, if we follow the code, could we put, you know, signage there, rather than putting signage there, we'd like to take it and move it around to the front with, with the pylon sign. And then the other, the other issue with that is we're constantly trying to work with you on these properties, but then also we hear from Audi and Mercedes telling us they need the latest and greatest, their, their corporate signage. So even though this sign looks like a very large sign, it's, it's 20 feet by about a little over six feet wide. The actual signage on there is quite small. It's not like 20 feet of buy here, turn here, sale here. You know, this is very, it's very well done. We've got the address down near the bottom and then the Audi logo and, and just the Audi name on there. So even though it's a large sign, it's really, we don't feel is, is out of character with the rest of the area. And I think that's all I have. And I think that's all I have. Just some questions.
Fred, a question. But the gentleman just said the linear footage of the front of the building closest to Ogden, where the circles are in Audi and Westmont. What about the new addition that they put in the back end of the parking lot? Would that also constitute the front of the building?
Well, I think that's what Tom is kind of getting at here. You know, they should... Technically, maybe no, but in reality, yes. That is kind of the front of the building, and we think some consideration should be given to them, given the large investment that they've made in our community and their facility, and the fact that when this organization does things, they do it in a high-caliber fashion. We don't think the signage is out of character with the other dealerships in the area, and staff would give this a strong recommendation to the commission.
And we particularly like that Big Westmont.
It's a wonderful addition to their signage.
It's an Oakbrook, I'd be...
Yeah.
None of that Oakbrook Toyota in Westmont.
As Tom also mentioned, you know, it's almost as if part of the sign can be considered an art sculpture of sorts that's kind of in that distinctly European, German fashion that Audi is so noted for. There's very little actual lettering on this piece, so you could call it a piece of statuary that just happens to have some lettering and signage on it.
Yes, okay. All right, let's start with Commissioner Fleet on this.
Yeah, I think the addition of these signs, the roadway signs, the marquee, would really help delineate the property as you're westbound and trying to figure out where you're going to pull in, because even though it's a 35 mile an hour speed limit, there's a lot of action going on there. And it's nice to have a nice, clear sign target to go into, other than pass them by and then turn around at the next opportunity.
We have had customers say, "I wish you had a sign there so we didn't..." You know, you can see the sign from the street that's on the side of the building, but there's nothing that tells them, "Okay, you're here, and now you're not here anymore," so.
Yeah, so I've... And again, I think this would be in keeping with everything else that's along that way. It gets your product name out there. It gives a clear place to turn in. And I think that'll help both you and any customers coming your way.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I do agree with the fact that you pointed out that had the building been... The expansion been done a little differently, you would have had a much larger surface along the front of the building had that not been offset. And that would have been much more square footage of signage. So I do feel that that should be considered, because it really is kind of the front of the building, although the main showroom is kind of, you know, to the front. And as far as the other sign goes, the pylon sign, I mean, it's in the nature of the way that they, Audi, advertise. Rather than having a steel post coming up and then just having the sign, it's much more aesthetic to look at that nice, you know, artistic design pylon versus just having a pole there. So I tend to agree that it... Yes, that drawing. I tend to agree that the sign is very small. It just happens to be the structure the sign's on happens to be somewhat larger than it could have been. But I think that's more pleasant to look at than the alternative. So I'm in agreement with the signage liking.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I don't have any problem with it. As a matter of fact, I think it'll enhance the appearance of the whole project.
Commissioner Anton?
Wasn't there a similar sign to this before up there? That looks familiar.
There's a... It's a similar sign, but it's... I think it was just... It's the old sign in between.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
So this is the new... This is Audi's new corporate.
I like the S8. That's all I got.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes, I support this. I think after the investment that was made there, I think the exterior of the building is only exceeded in beauty by the inside, which is even more beautiful and spacious. I have had a couple of chances to be inside there. Very nice facility. And I can understand, after having met some of the corporate people, exactly what they want. They want this look and feel to be standardized, so they want the signage to also reflect that much the same way the building styles are also coming into line, if you will. Also, Ogden is a relatively... It's not relatively. It's a very busy street, and I think anything we can do to prevent accidents is also a good thing. And good proper signage for where you're going to turn in, I think, is important, because a lot of people are leaving from that stoplight if they're proceeding westbound. And, you know, they may be almost past that entrance, which is, I think, part of the problem that you've had. This'll give them a chance to see the sign and say, "That's where I need to turn," before they get past it with lots of traffic right in that area. So I have no problem. I think it's a great idea, and I support it.
Commissioner Thomas?
I agree with your presentation. Good luck.
Thank you.
I had one question. The existing pylon sign that's there now, that's going to come down? Is that going to be replaced with this new one?
Correct. That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because it looked like somebody drove into the base of it when I was... I do have a question on some of these smaller signs that are going to be projecting sign on a flagpole and then the projecting wall sign. I'm not seeing those where they would be on this drawing whatsoever. In fact, I didn't see a flagpole, to be honest with you.
I actually believe those are not... Those are actually part of their corporate...
Generic pronoun?
Generic product. Those are not part of this. Those will not be on this building.
They will not?
Those are part of their package, the sign. I think the sign guy mistakenly sent you their standard package that has everything. So those flag signs are not part of this.
Okay, I understand. Then I would echo my fellow commissioners' comments that I think this would be a great aid, and I hope it draws a lot of business for you, to be quite honest.
Thank you.
It is a beautiful building. All right, since we... Let me get myself organized here. Since we have requests for variance, we need readings of the findings of fact, if we could have that, please.
Criteria number one: The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The proposed new monument sign is required for the applicant's recently renovated and remodeled business. This sign, along with other existing non-conforming signs on the property, are required as part of Audi's national branding requirements. The applicant offers various services and options for its customers, and this signage will help properly direct customers on the property as well as properly brand the applicant product. Without these variances, the applicant cannot sufficiently brand and identify its product and services along heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue and therefore cannot yield a reasonable return on its investment.
Do you agree with this? Please raise your hand. Are you unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number two: The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant offers new and used vehicles for sale as well as service for vehicles, and the proposed signage will assist customers who are navigating the property.
Do you agree with this? Please raise your hand. Are you unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number three: The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed signage is consistent with other signage currently offered by other auto dealerships along Ogden Avenue. The signage is tasteful and will not adversely affect other properties along this busy commercial corridor.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning Item 11-034. Item A, zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval. And again, staff can tell you when you'll be before the Thursday evening committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck to you, sir.
Thanks.
Planning and zoning item 11-035, Village of Westmont, regarding a zoning code text amendment as follows. A, amend Appendix A, Section 6.04, Paragraph D of the Westmont zoning code to allow administrative waiver of lot coverage variances under certain circumstances. Mr. Kimball?
Mr. Chairman, to quote a famous religious phrase, "Ask and you shall receive." And I think based upon the suggestion of the Planning and Zoning Commission at a previous meeting, staff endeavored to put into ordinance form the requests that they had. For those who are watching on television tonight, the Village Board in November of last year voted to reduce the allowable lot coverage in the Village of Westmont from a maximum of 40% to a maximum of 35%. That generated a very large number of variance requests coming before both this board and the Village Board. And staff felt it would be appropriate that if these types of variances came up and were in areas that were not known to be problem drainage areas throughout the village, would the Village Board, would the Planning and Zoning Commission be comfortable with allowing staff to make an administrative interpretation and decision on whether or not a lot coverage variance between 35 and 40% could be approved administratively without having to go through the formal variance process? That is the outline of the ordinance that you see before you here tonight, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, shall we start with Commissioner Thomas?
I'm in agreement with the way we talked about it last month. It's the way it was proposed, and I agree with it.
Commissioner Pill?
I think it's very well-written. I certainly support this and think it's a good idea. However, I just want to say that I also feel that we probably never should have gotten to this point. And our... The commission was unanimous in maintaining that it stay at 40% and that we use 35% for areas that were trouble, as opposed to making everything 35%. And now we're coming in sort of after the barn door is open and the horses are out. Now we're changing it back this way. I think it's an extra set of steps. This certainly goes in that direction, but it still leaves everybody in a non-conforming situation. And I think that places a lot of homeowners in that particular situation. So I support this as a step, but I would hope ultimately that we would go back to the 40%, which is what it really should be, what this commission recommended, and I think to take away all the non-conforming status of all the properties in Westmont that were switched into that.
Commissioner Anton?
Mr. Pill confuses me. Kidding. No, this is actually really good. Good job, Mr. Kimball and the staff. It's a step in the right direction.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I agree to a step in the right direction, but I still think, as Commissioner Pill indicated, the ones that are the inclined to be the flooding lots should be the exceptions. The rules should be 35. We're doing it just backwards now. I mean, the rules should be 40. And that we're kind of correcting it in a way. Ultimately, I too would like to see it gone back to 40 and make those exceptional ones the ones that would be... It's just backwards. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I feel this is a good interim step, and I'm hoping that when we get resolved the issues that we have throughout the village with the problem drainage areas, that we may be able to go back to the original 40% and then maybe still have some sort of an exceptions for those areas that we may not be able to resolve, you know, finally. I mean, the village does have some definite issues with drainage, and I'm hoping the majority will be resolved in the future. And maybe those last few little areas can still be on that exceptions list at 35. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fleet?
So just a question. One, I echo the idea of what got us here and what we're doing about it. And hopefully, we'll get back to something that's a little easier. But just in the way this is worded, and not looking at the overall ordinance, but if something meets 35, it would pass under the existing. But then, have we created a gray area here with saying 35 to 40? Where, you know, if you did it, if you looked at it from an engineering viewpoint, you'd say like greater than 35, but less than or equal to 40?
And that's exactly what we're saying here, Commissioner Fleet, is that staff would have discretion then, if there were no other extenuating circumstances, to be able to administratively grant the variance between those two parameters. If it's more than 40% or if there are extenuating circumstances, then staff would decline to issue the administrative waiver and require the person to go through the formal variance process.
Okay, but just the way it reads, it says between 35 and 40, where 35 already meets...
Should it be 36 to 40, is what you're saying?
Well, you know...
Greater.
However you want to write it, but if it's 35 right now, it doesn't need this.
Right.
Where, you know, it's an overlapping area where...
Greater than 35, less than 40.
And if that's the way you guys want to be it, that's fine, but...
We could say 35.1 or, you know, anything greater than 35.
Should be greater than 35 and less than or equal to 40.
Yeah, that'd be...
Sure. We'd be happy to...
Commissioner Fleet is a teacher, you can tell.
I know. It just had to be that.
I'd like to ask staff one more question. If a particular applicant comes in and has more than one variance, in other words, one that would fall into this category and then an additional variance, at that point, would you, would the staff make that decision, or would they leave it up to the commission to make a recommendation, you know, as a total package?
Well, as I interpret this, Commissioner, the staff would be empowered to make that decision strictly on the lot coverage if it were between the greater than 35% but less than 40%, as Commissioner Fleet has correctly pointed out.
Less than or equal to.
But with regard to the other one, we would have to take that through the formal variance process. Now, we're open to suggestion or direction from the commission and the Village Board. If you'd like to see those, if there's more than one, have them all packaged together. However, that would require a greater expense on the part of the applicant, because they would have to pay a second $500 variance fee, go through the publication requirement that statute requires, and that is a little bit more expensive for the applicant.
Okay, all right. That would be a burden on those homeowners, so maybe separate those out.
It would be a little bit of a cost-saving for the applicant.
I would presume, Mr. Kimball, that the village does have floodplain maps drawn out?
Yes, we do.
So we do, we can delineate the lots which are subject to the flooding.
Yes, and even in over and above that, Mr. Chairman, we have the recent stormwater village analysis done by Christopher Burke Engineers from last year. So we have very up-to-date maps that show us where problem flood areas are, whether or not they are in a noted floodplain area, according to the USDA.
I see.
We know that we have some other problem areas that may not appear in a floodplain, but we know they repeatedly flood, and we take great caution in issuing building permits for that reason.
I have to echo Commissioner Pill's comments that I think this might be a good first step, but I think there's more to be done yet. Any further comments? Are you looking for an approval from us, then?
I think, Mr. Chairman, we would be requesting a recommendation from the P&amp;Z Commission at this time, sir.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Village Board of Item A, amend Appendix A, Section 6.04, Paragraph D of the Westmont zoning code to allow administrative waiver of lot coverage variances under certain circumstances.
So moved.
Second.
That's motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion?
Is there just a clarification? Is the vote on the wording greater than 35% and not more than 40% or as written?
Greater. Yeah, that'll...
Greater than 35%.
Greater than 35.
Forty.
That's what I think to do.
Okay. Just to clarify that.
Less than or equal to 40.
Ready? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, that's the last item on our agenda. Does staff have anything?
Nothing further at this time, Mr. Chairman. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Any commission comments?